First item on today's agenda is discussion and action to dismiss the city manager. There's been a request for the manager's resignation due to various alleged allegations in contrast with those in contesting those allegations, Mr. Rutherford declined to resign. I personally don't like this agenda, but it needs to be dealt with. I have utmost confidence in the city manager, as do many of the citizens and city employees, but as per evidence of the last couple of council meetings, that may not be the consensus of this council. I feel that this needs to be addressed now. Therefore, to expedite this controversy and eliminate many tax dollars being spent on legal counsel in long drawn out court battles, I feel it germane at this time to make a motion to accept the following resolution: to suspend the city manager and buy out his employment agreement with the city of Crossville. Whereas the city of Crossville, Tennessee, David A. Rutherford entered into an employment agreement on September 16th, 2013, for Rutherford to serve the city manager of said city. Whereas the agreement did memorize the terms of their relationship and assured the continuous harmonious management of the city in the event the relationship should cease to exist. And whereas the charter of Crossville does allow the city to enter into contracts for services with businesses and individuals. And whereas this employment agreement is legal and binding under the city charter. And whereas Section 14 of the employment agreement does allow for a severance package of six months of the annual salary of aid of suspension and termination. And whereas the city council has determined that the employment relationship between the city and city managers should cease to exist. And whereas this relationship will end without specific cause for the benefit and betterment of the city. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council does desire to honor the severance provision in the employment agreement, as well as Section 18 of said agreement regarding indemnification. And further be it resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the city attorney is directed to work with Mr. Rutherford and Finance Director to determine the appropriate severance package to be awarded to Mr. Rutherford as terms of the employment agreement. Do I have a second on this motion?
I'd like to hear that first paragraph again if I could.
Of the resolution?
Yeah.
Whereas the city of Crossville, Tennessee, and David A. Rutherford entered into an employment agreement on September 16th, 2013, for Rutherford to serve the city manager of said city. Keep going.
Yeah, one more.
And whereas the agreement did memorize the terms of their relationship and assured the continuous harmonious management of the city in the event the relationship should cease to exist.
Ask the city attorney a question.
Sure.
Do you see any problem with this resolution?
Well, I'm not seeing the resolution.
I don't like the word.
But from what I heard from the resolution, it sounds like they found balance here. Issues. Of course, I've not had the time to actually read or look at it.
Can we hear the question?
I'll second that motion.
The question was if the attorney saw any problem with this resolution. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I have a secondary motion, Mayor. And the secondary motion is that the public be allowed to speak during this agenda. Or are they supposed to sit there and shut up?
For those of you that are not familiar with our recently adopted standing rules, hearing special call meetings, our standing rules do not allow public comment.
Boo.
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 Do I hear a second?
I think Councilman wants a second if there's discussion. Correct, Councilman.
Seconded, Rich. Secondary motion.
Oh, yeah.
Any further discussion on the first motion?
Do you have something you'd like to add, Bill?
No. That was, I was getting up in regards to Councilman Susan's motion, if it was a second.
So, the resolution that passed is going to give will and authority to negotiate terms of a severance package for David Rutherford?
And Fred, in your county department.
Gotcha. We got approval. Everything has to come back for approval, correct?
It sounds like, if I could see the resolution, talk about it.
It sounds to me, select, it sounds to me as though what you're saying is that we're going to give Rutherford $50,000 to walk away. Would anybody from Finance here?
Yeah.
I don't see Fred. The contract states that he gets his severance package with these six months salary.
Would that not be $50,000?
If this resolution passes, then to your question, the severance, they automatically would not have to get approval, so in accordance with Section 18 of his contract, this would go ahead and approve the severance, so it wouldn't come back before we, we strictly go on those terms, which is six months of his previous, six months of salary.
And that started out as suspension. This also comes before the next regular meeting of councils, that's correct?
This is the suspension. You'll have to come back and vote on the final resolution of termination.
Any further discussion in reference to this?
I have a lot of discussion. Do I have the floor, Mayor?
Yes, you do.
Sally, I'll be wanting to copy this tape, please.
Yes.
I have several legal questions, first off, the city attorney. Can an elected official be sued for defamation of character or liable?
Because I represent the city council, each member, I think, answer the question will be a direct conflict of my interest in serving.
Okay. Basically, ladies and gentlemen, the members of this council can lie and not be held responsible. Can a member of council order a city employee to do anything?
No, per the terms of our charter, the city manager has that authority. The council has the right to inquire and ask questions of city employees. They don't have to actually order the employee to do anything.
Does the interim city manager have any authority before he's sworn in?
The interim city manager will have to execute the oath of office. Once they've done that, they will have the authority to enact.
From the time that the city manager is, interim manager is selected by the council to the time he's sworn in, that means nobody's in charge of this city. Since the council can't tell the department head what to do and he can't, is that a fair definition?
I need to check on that. I think once they execute the oath of office, which I believe is already prepared today if someone was sworn in, that they would have authority, but however, I can look at that closer and get back with you. I wasn't prepared for that question, so.
Okay. So, we're prepared at this time to swear somebody in?
That's the prerogative of the council.
Okay.
Staff is ready for it.
Can you give me the definition of use of authority?
In regards to...
Any elected official or employee?
Well, you know, of course, this is off the top of my head, but essentially, any time that you act outside of the authority within which you're given, so if you're a council member, your authority is laid out in the charter, if you act outside of that, you're abusing your authority. So, same goes for employee. I can give you a better definition if you'd like, if you're on it.
Okay. That won't be necessary. Thank you very much, Mr. Rutherford. I've been accused of a lot of things, but my moral compass has never been honest. I've been asked not to bring things to life, to let this go through smoothly today.
Excuse me, Councilman Susan. The three minutes has elapsed.
Oh, outrageous.
This is, this is pretty, and if I continue to speak, am I to be jailed and fined? Does the people want to hear me talk?
Yes.
One question, please. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this motion?
You need another three minutes.
Thirty minutes.
Gang order.
Anyone else who wants to speak to the motion? Okay, Councilman Susan, so you're allowed three, two to three minutes sessions. Please continue.
What's going on here is a travesty, an absolute travesty. Mr. Rutherford's been accused of things based on lies, and there's been a lot of lies out there. Personal motivation. This is, Mr. Rutherford isn't on trial here today. The city's on trial, and the council is on trial. We had a city manager that was moving us forward, the best city manager this city has ever seen.
Yes.
That people went behind the scenes to cause problems, harass the city manager to try to get him acquitted. When that didn't happen, then this motion was put forward. Mr. Curley, at the last time he tried to fire him, said, "Well, I haven't explained to him what his job is." He hasn't done anything different between now and then. The only thing is, he has the power of the swing vote, so he can cut a deal. That's what this is about. And it is pathetic that we've lost the right to speak, and it is no small amount that this is coming right at the time that the annual budget is coming in. That means three people's going to control that budget. We won't have a thing to say about it. There's no, the point of electing five people is so that the minority can speak out, represent the other side. No longer, now that the tri-pack is in place, three people control this city, but there be no doubt in your mind, and they'll bring in the puppet that they want, and it's going to be interesting to see who the puppet is today, to do what they tell them, because the city manager didn't do. You can't be insubordinate when you're not subordinate. The city manager works for the council, the council at large, not any individual. No individual in this council has a right to order them to do anything, and that's what's been going on here. And he said, "No, we're going to have to go back and see what the council wants." There's never been a more professional or honest person that walked into City Hall than David Rutherford. I ask each and every one of you to remember this at the next election and to get active, because if you all allow this to go on, you've just lost your city.
Any other comments?
I've got one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is one man's opinion, and I don't believe he can back up a thing he says.
Post that.
Mayor, you gotta do your job.
Will you maintain silence from the crowd, please?
If he can back up all those allegations, he needs to be running president. He don't need to be sitting on the problems, City Council. That's all I have. I, I request permission to back up what I have to say. Pass my three minutes?
I'm sorry, we would have to approve that by the full council to extend the...
Tri-pack will never break that.
Mayor, I'd like to say something, if I may, and I'll make it short, sweet.
Thank you.
Is, y'all just listen to Councilman Susan get his opinion, and that's his opinion, accuse people of telling lies, and there's no telling how many lies have been printed in the Crossville Chronicle as fact that's come out of Councilman Susan's mouth here in council meetings that has defamated people, harmed them, made people look negative down on them in the public.
You're out of order, sir. We're no longer having personal protections.
What did he just sit there and do, Mayor? I'm sorry?
He don't have to.
What's the difference?
I'd like to call for a vote now.
Just goes to show that you support his actions.
Let him speak. He's digging his own grave. We want to hear it. Let him speak.
Councilmember Susan?
Pass.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Aye.
Mayor Prochin Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Curley?
No.
Mayor Mayberry?
Aye.
Councilmember Susan, do you wish to report?
I do. This vote is going based on the request of David Rutherford to keep peace in this city hall. It's not going on my conscience, yes.
Much curious.
Next item on the agenda. Mayor, may I take lead?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is discussion and action on appointment of interim city manager. Assuming that this is going to have to have nominations where they're to be approached, I'd like to nominate Sally Ebelzey for that position.
Does Sally want that, Charlie? Can I ask that question?
I prefer not if I'm not going to have support of the whole council. I don't want to be in an adversarial position.
I'd like to nominate Steve Hill.
I wonder if Mr. Hill would accept that position if he were selected?
Yes, sir, Your Honor.
Other nominees?
I'd like to nominate Randy Bond.
Randy Bond, retired from Compton County Bank. Are there any other nominees for the council?
I'd like to discuss these. I've had a talk with him along with Billy Clark.
What's that? The West Side, Mr. Kelly, or some of those?
Billy Clark. Does he have a bill?
Of course he has. He's in his room listening to the...
Has Mr. Bond agreed to serve?
I have no problem with that. I just think he'd be...
I move that we, we do this again when we're better prepared. Obviously, we don't know what we're doing here, but we've got one nominee.
Hey, there's no motion on the floor, Councilman Susan. You're out of order if the mayor's not going to do his job. I need to make a motion statement. There's no motion for second for any action to take forward.
Dictator.
Now, it's called a pardon measure for six.
City attorney, may I ask a city attorney question?
Yes. Can I make a motion at this time?
You can make, you can make a motion, yes, and require a second before discussion takes place.
Thank you very much. I move to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Susan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyatt?
No.
Mayor Prochin Harris?
No.
Councilman Curley?
No.
Mayor Mayberry?
Aye. Counselor, can this discussion be held at our next scheduled meeting where we have candidates lined up that agree to take the position? Or would it be necessary to have another special call meeting prior to that?
Well, that motion failed, there could be another motion to move this action to a work session or next meeting. If it failed, if it passed, then we could do that. However, if that didn't pass, we'd need to go ahead and address this today. We do need to make a motion on how you, how you want to vote on these nominees if, if a vote is taken, whether that be by ballot, polls, vote, however you'd like to proceed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, each city council member nominate an individual if they choose to, and we take two rounds of voting. Each, first round, we vote twice for two, for two individuals nominated, and then take the top two to the second round and take your top pick.
I think, Mayor, I address the council. I know we're not open for discussion yet, but we've missed several key elements in this decision-making process.
And they are?
They are, one, what, what are we going to pay them? Two, we haven't even had a chance to talk to these people, other than what these people have already made their plans on. We haven't even had a chance. We're going to turn over the city to somebody we haven't had a chance to talk to? That's a joke.
We have a motion on the floor, Counselor?
Yes.
And the motion is?
Councilman Curley's motion. Sally, you have it.
I don't have it. I have this, to nominate one person, each council member to nominate one person and vote by ballot for two rounds, if I can vote.
I think round one, you pick two people, round one, you vote on one person.
But the motion has not been seconded.
That's correct. And I would advise to make a motion that we can work out those things, such as compensation, contract, interim position, how long it will last, unless you want to work those things out here. I don't know how this goes until I make another motion.
So, the motion is, it's not seconded. And then we have a second round of votes, narrow it down.
I did not hear what Councilwoman Harris said.
I said so. The motion I hear on the floor, although it's not being seconded, is that the first round of votes would be, we vote for two people, and then the top two are selected, and they go through, and then a round of voting to pick out the final interim position.
So, we have, we have two nominees to choose from, worthless one and worthless two.
At this juncture, the city manager is suspended, but he is not actually terminated.
That's correct. The motion is a temporary suspension. You'll have to vote on a final termination, so of course, who is appointed today will be an interim position until that decision is made, and can go forward with, to keep it on an interim basis or make a contract.
And what we have as per his termination would probably be on our next council meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Unless there's a special call meeting prior to that.
Correct. We have to wait five days. If he doesn't take the procedures which are laid out in the charter, then after five days, he can bring forward a final resolution to terminate.
So, there's a motion on the floor. Is anybody seconding that?
No one has seconded it yet.
I'm gonna second that motion, so we can move forward.
I have a motion and a second. Personally, I would like to...
Point of order.
State the point of order, please.
This time, we have one council member who, who has a relationship with one of the nominees. I think that's just not declared that.
Oh, I will declare that I did have a relationship with Mr. Watkins, and I will not, I will recuse myself in that respect.
Very good. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Personally, I would like to see this tabled until the special, another special call meeting or our next council, whether or not they would serve in this capacity.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion already on the floor.
You can table the motion.
No, he's asked for a table.
I have to table it until, until a, another special, special call meeting or our next council, regular scheduled council meeting. So, that'd be a secondary motion. Any further discussion on that motion?
On the original?
Secondary. This is a secondary to table the original, until it can be researched a little bit.
I want through the original.
The secondary can go, you don't want to table it, then you go back to the original. If it is approved to be tabled, then it will be moved out of the road where you can talk to some of these potential candidates and possibly come up with other potential candidates since then.
Didn't we just vote on him when he tried to resign, or adjourn the meeting?
No.
That's basically what you voted on.
Point of order. Can we have the attorney come up here and respond? We have a secondary motion on the table to, to table this until the following meeting, which was unclear, a regular meeting or a special meeting. Is that not a lawful secondary motion?
Yeah, you can go ahead and, you can go to motion a second, so you can vote on whether or not to table, and if that fails, you'll be back on the first motion.
I'd like to ask you a question, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Do you recommend that we appoint an interim today?
That's a policy decision that you all have to make, and I'm sorry, but I can't, I can't advise you on that. I can give you legal advice, but I can't advise you on whether or not to appoint somebody or not to appoint today.
We have three names on this ballot at this juncture. Question is, do you all feel comfortable? Only one of these has agreed to actually serve, the other two have not been consulted on this, as far as I know. Can you not wait until, say, Thursday for a special call meeting to address this issue?
I can wait.
You want to hear it, Minna?
Life doesn't revolve around Councilman Curley's time schedule. He said that before. The city moves on. We have a vote on the floor. I think we need to have that vote now for the table.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Time for table is... Time for table is to be determined unless we state a time. I think time is of the essence. I'll call. I amend my motion to state that the time be Friday at 12:00 noon. So now we have a motion and a second on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Susan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyatt?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Harris? No. Councilman Curly?
No.
Aye. Now, we're back to the original motion.
We have nominations here that haven't even affirmed that they're, they want the job. I'm confused. We only have one person that has indicated that he asked, and I don't believe he even has a high school diploma.
But Councilman Susan, that's enough, buddy. That's ridiculous. You're out of order.
No, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Order, 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 order.
Let me tell you, Councilman Susan's character.
Oh, shut up! Shut up! You're out of order.
You will not be rated.
We have a motion on the floor.
So should one either.
Sally, can you read back the motion now? I've got a little bit of confusion on that.
The motion is...
Read back the motion now. I've got a little bit of confusion on that.
The motion is for each council member to nominate one person and vote by ballot through two rounds, with the top two in the first round moving to the second round.
Counselor, the qualifications for city manager, are there any qualifications?
The charter specifies that it be strictly based upon their... Manager shall be solely appointed on basis of his executive and administrative qualifications. He need not be a resident of the city or the state at the time of his appointment, but may reside outside of the city while in office, only with approval of council.
I think we'll bring these people up and let them hear what their qualifications are.
Like I point out, with this motion, the previous nominations, if this passes, these previous nominations will have to be renewed. So each council member may go through and make their nominations, once you've voted on how to vote.
So the motion on the floor, for each council member to select a candidate. And that was seconded. Is that correct? That is seconded. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Susan?
No.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Harris? Aye. Councilman Curly?
Aye.
Mayor Mayberry?
Aye. So now, we have to decide who we would like to nominate. The interim city manager.
Does the mayor like to nominate Steve Hill like I previously stated?
This ballot has four boxes, so... You won't have that one, because I don't have a nominee. I've not had time to consult with anybody. This was, this was rammed down our throat for you people who have already had people, and it was pretty obvious that Hill was, at the last time we tried to fire him, he was available. It's already discussed, probably over at the Beef and Barrel.
Mayor, if you're not going to comment about Councilman Susan, why are you lying against Steve Hill?
I'm sorry to get sidetracked here. I'm trying to go up as a candidate. You have Randy Bond? You have Randy Bond. You have Billy Loggins.
Randy Bond did not acknowledge that he will take the job. I'm putting a vote on somebody who hasn't acknowledged he'll take the job. I'm confused. I think that's a reasonable question. Will you take nominations from the floor? I would like to hear, because I can make one nomination. Who would you like? Is there somebody here that would like to fill in as the city manager? Your name, sir?
My name is Colby Artis. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, a PhD in civil engineering, a former chairman of civil engineering, a senior engineer.
What's your...
I'm retired.
What's your last name?
Artis, A-R-T-I-S.
I nominate Mr. Artis.
Your position is a full-time job. I'll nominate Bob Schwartz.
Who's Bob Schwartz?
Would you accept elected, Bob? Interim?
With this council?
I move that nominations cease.
Who do we have?
So Steve Hill, Randy Bond, Billy Loggins, and Colby Artis. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What are the qualifications of the first candidate, please? He was nominated. We should at least get the qualifications, what his qualifications are. This is a reasonable question.
As a city employee.
What's his education? He's here, he can answer that.
I have a business management degree from Tennessee Tech University.
And then I owe you an apology, sir. So I misinformed you or something.
You have questions, or we read them? Okay, mark your ballot. The two people on the first round.
I have a question. Can I ask something?
I'm sorry, sir. You're not allowed to speak during a special call meeting.
But background check. Government background check.
Thanks, sir.
I believe we have to have one before he's supposed to. Sally, is that not correct? We have to have a background check before he's going on?
We have in the past.
Our group votes. Councilman Pete Susan votes for Mr. Artis. Councilmember Danny Wyatt votes for Billy Loggins and Steve Hall.
Steve Hill.
Hill, I'm sorry. Steve Hill. Mayor Pro Tim Pamela Harris votes for Randy Bond and Steve Hill. Councilmember Jesse Curly votes for Steve Hill and Billy Loggins. Mayor James Mayberry votes for Randy Bond and Colby Artis. So, I'll ask Sally to confirm my numbers.
That be the case, you have three tied with two votes, one with three votes.
That's correct. Mr. Artis received two votes, Billy Loggins, two votes, Randy Bond, two votes, Steve Hill, three votes. So we will have to vote again in order to comply with the motion that was passed.
Pick two again.
Mr. Artis receives one vote, Billy Loggins receives one vote, Randy Bond receives one vote, Steve Hill receives three votes. Again, we don't have the ability to go to a second round.
We have to have everyone vote.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Councilman Jesse Curly votes for Steve Hill, Mayor Mayberry votes for Randy Bond, Mayor Pro Tim Harris votes for Steve Hill, Councilman Pete Susan votes for Mr. Artis, Councilmember Danny Wyatt votes for Billy Loggins and Steve Hill.
You've had two rounds, and Mr. Hill's got the story both times.
That's correct.
Can we not continue with that, or do we have to keep going through this?
Somebody can make a motion. Go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to appoint Steve Hill as our interim city manager until the city council has time to go through the process of hiring a permanent city manager.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
I would hope that the process will start as soon as possible.
I would say 90 days. Would that be reasonable?
Do you amend that motion to include some kind of timeframe as a core?
I wish I had a timeframe there until we appoint the city manager. That's pretty fair.
That's wide open.
I'm just having a proceeding process. Okay, we have a second on that motion.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Susan?
No.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Harris? No. Councilman Curly?
Aye.
Mayor Mayberry?
No. Are there any other items on the agenda for today?
I would like to make a motion, thus germane to the two agenda items. The city manager was accused of mishandling funds. I make a motion for an audit. I think it's only fair, if we're going to accuse him, that we have some proof. I make a motion to have an audit.
City Attorney, is there an item agenda regarding that on a special call meeting here today?
It's germane. The germane rule applies, I believe.
There's not a specific item, Counselor.
Go ahead.
There's not a specific item agenda. I think you can make a motion, though, as germane to the city manager. However, I would point out that the resolution adopted did not make such accusation.
It's on record permanently. I think it's time we detained his reputation. We'll see where the facts are, who made a false accusation, or that they were true. So I make a motion for a forensic audit of the books of the city of Crossville since the time that the city manager took office.
We have no motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? I'll second that motion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Susan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyatt?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Harris?
No.
Councilman Curly?
No.
They didn't let you know that that was an expense of $120,000, since the mayor didn't have any body for discussion.
No, that's incorrect. That was only for all the way back.
We have... Three notices, is that correct?
Yes.
And now, on the audit, the motion fails. Do I hear a motion adjourned?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to set Steve Hill's salary at the same, I believe, as what Mike Turner was receiving when he was our interim city manager, and that is $75,000.
My question on that is, Mr. Turner was the interim... Being double dipped, in other words, in the plane.
And I believe, I'm sorry, but I believe that's the same, only Jack Miller also received.
Now, since Mr. Hill is on the city retirement plan right now, would that not affect this discussion?
Absolutely not.
Legal opinion, please, since we don't have somebody?
I have to get back to you with a question.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I get that?
Yeah. That affects how long he stays, affects what he does with his TCRS. If they're here very long, 90 days, something like that, I'm not sure exactly how long it is, but then he has to come off TCRS. And then he'll go back, we go on whatever we have there for whatever timeframe, and then when he quits in and we appoint someone else, then he'll go back on TCRS.
Does that include his insurance, TCRS, or is that just retirement fund?
That's just retirement.
And he's on city insurance as we speak?
Yes, he is.
So the motion is... Repeat it, please.
Set the salary at $75,000.
Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Susan?
No.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Harris? Aye. Mayor Mayberry?
No. Do I hear another motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Curly.
Another motion adjourned?
So move.
Can I get a copy of your resolution?
Motion and a second. I'll go ahead and say that.
Aye.
Pooed.